The New Services Committee to order at 5:50. Members present, Council Tavares and Councilor Waterman. Tonight, we have Jeffrey Bailey for Election Commissions. Come on up, sir.
So I guess I start with my name and address. My name is Jeffrey Bailey. I am at Five Sheridan Circle here in Attleboro, and I have been nominated to be on the Election Commission. And so I guess what I was instructed to do is just give a brief little biography of why I'm interested in the position, why I think I'm qualified. So I also, I'm a pastor of a church. I'm used to speaking for 45 minutes. That's not going to happen, so we'll definitely have to work at that. It's a big, more of a challenge. But anyway, as far as my background is concerned, I've lived here in Attleboro now. It'll be almost 36 years. I've been pastoring Grace Baptist Church since October of 1988. My children were all born here. It's sturdy, and today, my fourth grandchild was born here today, just about three hours ago.
Congratulations.
Pretty excited, and my wife is waiting for me to be done so that we can get up to the hospital. As I look over why this position, in 2001, I started Grace Baptist Christian Academy. We had 11 students. This fall, we will enroll over 200. That academy has become much more diversified than what it was when we started. Most of our students, or a good number of our students, are what the Census Bureau would say, non-Caucasian. Many, a large segment of our students are either first- or second-generation immigrants, and represent, I think, last count, 22 different countries are coming to our school. It is, with that diversity, a significant diversity of opinion on different things has entered in. That wasn't always the case. And so a couple of years ago, I decided that I needed to take a step back from partisan politics completely for the good of the school and to maintain a unity within the school. Don't regret that decision, but I still missed it, to be completely honest. We step back from being involved in campaigns heavily or to even addressing publicly different As I was, you know, as I've been away, I've run for office three times, state representative twice, state senate once, came up short all three times, but learned a lot as far as the system, as far as the system goes. So as I stepped away, when Steve Semple, the Chair of the Attleboro Republican City Committee, called me and said, "Is this something you'd be interested in?", I said, "Absolutely. It's a way for me to be involved, to give back without having to..." And actually being able to formally say to people, "I'm not involved in partisan politics any longer." That is, that is in my past, that is history for me. And yet, there's still a way that I can serve and help the system. So that's why I would like to do the position, and I'm honored to be nominated for it. As far as my qualifications and background, as I said, I've run for office three times, and I was involved with some referendum questions in years past as well, particularly the gas tax question back in 2014. I was extremely involved with that. So I have been, I've become very familiar with how election offices work, as well as not just here in Attleboro, but around Bristol County. I've been into numerous ones at different times, for different reasons. So I feel very confident that I understand how the system works, and I'm pleased to be here and be glad to answer any questions.
Great. Councilors, any questions? Council Tavares?
Just comments. So Jeff and I have known each other for a long time. Appreciate all of the work that you've done here in Attleboro. As you mentioned, you've been here for over 30 years, you're a pastor to church for decades, and, you know, a visionary, having started the school. And the impact I think that has on Attleboro and the surrounding communities is huge. So definitely appreciate that. I've been the benefactor, even though I didn't attend the school. I knew people who went there growing up, and I think that's been a huge part of the fabric of this community. So thank you, and thank you for your willingness to step up and volunteer in this capacity. Thank you.
Councilor Waterman.
Well, Jeff, congratulations on being nominated.
Thank you.
What do you think are the most important concerns in the role as an Election Commissioner?
Well, I'm not really sure of all the minutia at this point. I'm sure that they'll tell me and teach me, and I'm looking forward to that. But having run for office, what I would say is that I think that the elections in Attleboro are run incredibly well. Regardless of who is in charge of what and who wins or who loses, I've always had, it was always a good experience and always felt well-run. So I just look at it as my role is not really to do anything new or unique, just to try to keep it going in the same way. Make sure that people have confidence that the elections are being done properly, transparently, fairly. And I think as long as people have confidence, outcomes are not as important, as long as everybody feels as though it's been done well and efficient.
Any other questions? Council Lavoie?
Thank you. Just a brief comment. We've gotten a lot of new volunteers and people throughout this year, but I do think that, you know, of all those, you're one of the best put into the position we've seen your time here, and your expertise is going to go far away. And I definitely thank you for volunteering. And as somebody elected, I appreciate knowing that you'll help oversee that it's done fairly. Thank you.
Great. All right. Councilor Reynolds?
I don't have a lot to say, Jeff. I just think you'll do a really good job, and you'll like it.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, sir, very much. I appreciate it, and you'll be hearing from us soon.
Okay. Very good.
Talk soon. Thank you. All right, for the docket of August 20, 2024, entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Christopher McDermott as Economic Development Director, turn next fire, February 2026. Second. Thank you, sir. Christopher, along with two others, are going to be here on September 10th, but we're going to get this confirmed as they're already hired, and we'll hear from them very shortly. Any questions, comments, concerns?
It's a little difficult. I haven't met the gentleman yet.
Right. Yep, yep. You will on September 10th, so we'll take it from there. All right. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. For the docket of August 20, 2024, entertain a motion to approve the expenditure during fiscal year 2025 of Community Development Block Grant. Also approve any future grant amendments regarding the conditional award of $13,200 to the Recreation Department.
Second.
Thank you, sir. So basically, the program is a free drop-in opportunity for youth ages seven to 17. No paperwork required. Grant covers the cost of the staff as well as program supplies. Program is available October through April 20th, April, I'm sorry, April 20, April, yeah, October through April 2:30 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The activities currently offered include supervised use of the game room, gymnasium, and computer room. And they're working on a plan to extend the program through June, as well as offering some structured activities. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Sounds great.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. For the docket of August 20, 2024, entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Stacia Chavez as Community Development Director, turn next fire, February 2026.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. So basically, she will be here September 10th as well, and we'll be hearing a lot more about her. But again, like Christopher McDermott, she comes highly recommended, and also with impressive resume along with Christopher as well. Any questions?
I'll just say that I had an hour with her today.
Oh, you did?
Introduced her to a few spots in the city. I was very impressed. She's coming to us from Worcester, and I look forward to getting to know her a lot better.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Oh, sorry. Yep. Oh, Council Lavoie?
Sorry.
Councilor, go first.
Is this a new position?
It's a new hire. No, it's an existing position.
Was that replacing? I can't remember.
Community Development Director.
Kaylee?
Dorothy.
Is it Dorothy? Dorothy Shabbat?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
CDBG.
Yeah. All right. Council Lavoie?
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to know, are we planning to take, vote these out before?
Yes, we're going to vote them out. They're already hired. They're already working. So we're going to vote them out, and they're going to be on September 10th.
I mean, I'm fine with whatever the body decides. I think, I'd love to wait to meet them first, just given that we have the 90-day temporary.
Well, they're already, like I said, they're already hired. They are on a 90-day, and that'll be up to the administration to decide, and President Delicio.
Thank you. So there is no rush in order to get these out tonight. If your committee feels that that's the way they want to go, you can hold this until August 18th, because it's still, as you said, under that 90-day.
Mm-hmm. I don't know. I have no issues with it. Council Tavares, Council Waterman?
I have no issue passing it out of committee, although I do agree with the sentiment. I think I do have a preference, just as a matter of practice. I mean, I don't expect it to change anything, right? But I think it probably is the right thing to do, to hear from those candidates beforehand. But I'm perfectly fine passing it through committee.
All right. So, yes, Council Tavares, sorry.
So what I would suggest is we call a, I know you talked to them about coming in in September, see if they can join us on August 18th.
All right, August 18th instead? Okay.
Yeah, this way here, we can vote them out that night, so we're not prolonging the period any longer than need be.
All right. Sounds good. All right. I will take care of that. Councilor Waterman?
So, Council Tavares and I, I think, quite similarly on this matter, I do, it's all right to vote it out of committee, in my opinion, but I would also like to see the entire council have a chance to get to meet the person.
Yeah, sounds good to me. All right. Vice President Dolan?
Hi, I know it's not my committee. Thank you. I mean, we do this all the time, where we vote it out before we meet these folks. They're already hired. It's, I think it's just kind of a courtesy to meet them, welcome them. Clearly, it's your committee. You can do whatever you see fit, but that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, but seeing that there's other questions, you know, we'll get these out of committee, and then we'll get them in on August 18th. All right. Okay. All right. All right, so, all right, for the docket of August 20, 2024, entertain a motion, oh, wait a minute, no, we didn't vote it out. I'm sorry. We didn't vote it out. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0, and we will hold these for council. All right, from the docket of August 20, 2024, entertain a motion to approve expanding such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the receipt of a grant for the Shine Program through the Executive Office of Elder Fares in the amount of $73,000.
Second.
All right, thank you, Council Tavares. So basically, for those not familiar with it, Shine assists the Medicare beneficiaries and caregivers navigate the complex health insurance system. This is the annual contract for the council and agent to serve, to continue to serve as the regional office for the Shine Program. The city of Attleboro has served in this capacity since 1986. These funds support Shine Regional Director and to support staffs for the program as well. Now that we've extended the hours on Tuesday until 6:00 p.m., they hope to expand the ability to meet the needs of the working older adults who are nearing Medicare eligibility. Closing at 4:00 p.m. did not allow them to do this in the past. And so obviously, this is something that's been continuing for a long time, and it's been great for the council and agent, and this is awesome, to continue doing this. Questions, comments, concerns? You got, no, all right, Council Sawyer?
I just wanted to mention that I actually met the people who did the Shine Program at the Open House for Council of Aging, and it's an amazing program, what they do for seniors who are just getting into Medicare, and how to learn about it, and what to do, and what to apply for, and all these other things. I thought it was, I think it's a great program.
I've had, you know, hopping on what you're saying is I've had, I've sent a lot of people there to them, and they've been phenomenal on getting people in the right direction and everything. So it's been an extremely wonderful program for the city.
Maybe that'd be something people know, saying this is great.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilor Waterman?
Just to build upon that, we in Attleboro have hosted the, this is basically the Shine Program for Bristol County, and so we have hosted that for a long time, several decades at least. And so it's an important thing that Attleboro does.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. For the docket of August 20, 2024, entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of Brian Germaine of Newport Avenue to serve as Inspector of Plumbing, Inspector of Gas Piping and Gas Applications, turn next fire, February 2027.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. Obviously, Brian's been doing this for a long time, and he's been an important part of the city. I know he has inspected plumbing at my house for gas. Yep. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Jeffrey Bailey, Five Sheridan Circle, to the Board of Elections Commissions, as per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 51, Section 16A. The Board of Elections Commissions must consist of four persons, of whom two shall always represent each of the two leading political parties.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavares. Obviously, we just heard from Mr. Bailey, and I'm quite convinced he'll do a great job. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. That's all for personal Veterans New Services Committee. A call for adjournment at 6:06.
Second.
All right, thank you, Council Tavares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 6:06.
Ordinances, Elections, and Legislative Matters is canceled for this evening.
I'd like to call this meeting of the municipal council to order at 6:06. Please join me for a salute to the flag.
I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? When now operating under suspended rules, the reason we're doing that is because tonight there will be no committee of the whole, there will be no communication from the mayor or the clerk, there'll be no old or new business. And Madam Clerk, I will have you read the notice for the first and only public hearing this evening.
Yes, sir. Public hearing to amend Chapter 12 of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro by adding the following subsection. 12-7, Protection of Public Trees. 12-7.1, Purpose. The city of Attleboro recognizes the importance of an urban forest in that in the city's ecosystem, trees contribute to air quality, reduce noise, and visual pollution. Help to moderate climatic extremes and conserve energy. The city's public trees enhance the visual and aesthetic attributes of streets, parks, and other public spaces for residents, businesses, and visitors. Public trees also enhance property values and the overall quality of life. For these reasons and more, it is the purpose of this section to promote and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing for the regulation of the planting, maintenance, and removal of public trees in the city of Attleboro. The complete recommended tree ordinances is available at the city council office or by email.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor? Serge, just your name and address for the record, please.
Derek Corsi, Forest 67, Seven Mile Road, Hope, Rhode Island. I am the Park and Forestry Superintendent, as well as the Tree Warden for the city, as well as an ISA-certified arborist. I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance. This essentially puts down to paper what we already do here in the city, and will allow us access to more grants to purchase street trees and tree, trees for the public. So that's why we want to put this into an ordinance. Doesn't really change anything we're already doing, it just puts it down... Doesn't really change anything we're already doing, it just puts it down, pen to paper, and makes it more official than what we already have.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for Superintendent Corsi? Counselor Tavoris?
Can you explain how codifying this into an ordinance helps the city to be able to obtain grants? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so, right now, we're trying to obtain our Tree City USA certification. So, part of their requirements is we have to have tree care staffing, which we already have, Arbor Day event, which we already have, an ordinance, which we don't already have. Once we have all those things in line, we're able to apply to become a Tree City USA. Usually, their applications at the end of the calendar year, so if we get this in by that time, we'll be able to apply. And then, by becoming one, we're eligible for all sorts of grants for the city. So, that's one. Second one is DCR has a number of grants available for trees and tree care. By having this on the books, it just moves us up the list as a qualifier for that.
Please follow up. So, in addition to the ordinance, are there any other obstacles that you see that you might have to overcome before getting to the point where we could be eligible for?
I don't, this is the last ball to drop. We have everything else in line, this is kind of the last thing we need to do.
Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. I completely support this, and I know it's, we're just codifying basically what we already do. Any chance of, if we were to get grants, that we would get our tree farm back? Would we be able to use that?
Well, tree farm isn't really, it's not practical this day and age. It's more practical to buy trees and then plant them immediately than to care for them over time. Even while nurseries don't even operate a tree farm, they order what they need, they sell it, and then they move on to the next point. And that's really what I'd like to do. You end up losing trees, you don't end up planting them in time. I envision this as, we know the areas we want to plant, and we plant them on-site at that time, rather than keeping them in stock. It's a more practical way to do things.
Right. I remember years ago that citizens would be able to get trees from the tree farm. So, if you had, you know, a cherry tree or whatever, I'd like to plant one in my yard. That's why I liked it, because, you know, people that maybe not.
So, we'd be eligible for grants like that, where instead of showing up any time of the year, I want a tree, we'd have certain events, you know, mainly during Arbor Day, where, okay, we have so many trees to give away, if you'd like one, come to a said location, pick up a tree, plant it in your yard. So, we would be able to do things like that, and that's part of the Tree City USA designation. You get those type of grants.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Counselor Sawyer?
I just wonder, I'm trying to figure out how to formulate my question, but if a development has to go into a certain area that has a bunch of trees, do they have to go to you or to tree wardens?
So, that would be conservation, conservation and planning. So, they're the ones there on the hierarchy. This ordinance is for public trees only, so anything within the city right-of-way or on city land. Private is still its own designation, that has to go through conservation and planning. I do have a say in new developments on where they plant their, you know, quote-unquote "street trees." I've noticed a lot of these new developments, they plant the wrong type of tree, they plant it in a terrible location, and this will allow me to give me a little more jurisdiction on what they do. Because if they plant a bad tree, or a tree in a poor location, it ends up being our problem, and it doesn't really solve the issue of planting more trees, because inevitably, they have to come down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Always good to see you.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone else, anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Counselor Tavoris, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
I declare that public hearing closed. I will now entertain, in a moment, I'll entertain a motion to recess, and this is so we can hear from the Finance Committee, Zoning and Land Use, Public Safety, Public Works, City Property and Claims. Once you're done with your committees, we will come back and vote out what we voted out. Vote in front of the full council what was voted out of committee today. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to recess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we recess at 6:13. First, we have, let's see, we have Finance first, so Counselor Reynolds will be pinch hitting for Mr. Cobus.
Okay, I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order at 6:12 or 6:13? 6:13?
Yep, 6:13.
From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve a 48-month lease agreement with Canoka Minolta for eight copiers to be deployed throughout the Attleboro School District.
Second.
Thank you. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of these funds, and also approve any future grant amendments regarding the award of $8,000 through Mass Development's TDI Local Fund Program to support the city's winter night festival. There are no matching funds required.
Second.
Thank you. Again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and it's a great, you know, no funding, no matching funds, so any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of these funds, and also approve any future grant amendments regarding the award of $5,000 through Mass Development's TDI Local Fund Program to organize and execute a new winter holiday event, Holiday Stroll, in our downtown.
Second.
Thank you. Again, pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to authorize the Attleboro School Department to pay previous-year school bills totaled $663.72, as identified below. All of them are from the vendor, EverSource. The amounts are $94.48, $38.81, $304.75, $69.25, and $152.43. They're at the business office, and they haven't been received for processing. Excuse me one moment, please.
It was $98.
Didn't I say $98.48?
You said $94.
$98, oh, I don't know where I got that. $98.48 for the first one, so that's a correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any questions? Sure?
Do you need a second?
I need a second.
Second?
I thought I had the second minute.
Yeah, second.
Oh, you did?
He seconded, yeah, okay.
No worries.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to transfer $11,958.86 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account 13001000-562200, Education, Bristol AG High School Department Assessment.
There's more to that.
That assessment.
The amount budgeted for this, you're right, okay. The amount budgeted for this expense in the fiscal year 2025 budget was $113,614, equivalent to the amount due in fiscal year 2024. The amount due for fiscal year 2025 is higher than anticipated due to an increase in the district's enrollment at Bristol County Agricultural High School.
Second.
Thank you. Again, I think it's a pretty self-explanatory finance question, so any other concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. And that is all the business that the Finance Committee has this evening, and I would like to call for an adjournment.
Second.
Thank you. I'm adjourned at?
6:18.
6:18. We are adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
We'll recognize Counselor Reynolds again.
Okay. I'd like to call City Property and Claims Committee to order at 6:18. And I have one matter from the docket of August 20, 2024. I entertain a motion to accept the generous donation to the city of, to the city, of eight publicly accessible automated external defibrillators, AED, and eight weatherproof heated and insulated cabinets from Sisters at Heart, and grant the mayor authorization to sign the associated partnership agreement that the city agrees to arrange for payment of the electrical permits and installation costs of approximately $10,000. The value of the AEDs and cabinets is $29,078.
Second.
Thank you. Again, all of these have been pretty self-explanatory, but are there any questions or concerns in this regard?
This is, this is great, this is amazing. This could really be a lifesaver for somebody, because more people know how to use these AEDs now, and this is a big deal when time is of the essence, so that's all I have to say. This is a great donation.
Yeah, it's agreed. Okay, any other concerns? Or questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes, and that is all the business City Property and Claims Committee has this evening. I'd like to call for an adjournment. Second. Okay. I'd call for an adjournment at 6:20.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at 6:20.
Before Vice President Dolan, just a reminder, I've already called for committee for those, committee meetings for next month, for those that don't have anything tonight, so that's why we're kind of skipping around. Okay, Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. I'd like to call Public Works to order at 6:20. I have three motions. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve expending such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the receipt of a grant through Mass DEP in the amount of $44,665 for cybersecurity upgrades of the water department SCADA system.
Second.
Excuse me, thank you. If you all remember, just a couple weeks ago, we passed the motion for the mayor to sign this, these grants, so we were able to get this grant, which is a big deal, cybersecurity for our water department. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Attleboro and the Massachusetts Water-Wastewater Agency Response Network, WORN. The Mass WORN consists of a mutual aid agreement for more than 100 public water and wastewater systems for help to Commonwealth.
Second.
Thank you. So, this is, just to be, just to give you a little quick info on this one, so this is extreme emergency only. Anybody that's involved in this will get paid regarding personnel, equipment, materials, supplies, so if we have to help hypothetically North Attleboro or vice versa, they will pay our people, supplies, materials, and everything, and it goes both ways. So, I just wanted to make that clear to everybody else. Does anybody have any questions?
It's not a question, if I can just augment your point. I think mutual aid in this day and age is so important, we see this with public safety, as well as some of the, in this case, water and wastewater, so this is really important. So, thank you for bringing it out and addressing it so quickly.
Agreed, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. From the docket of June 18, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the following loan order for the pilot study of PFAS and manganese removal, excuse me, order that $500,000 is appropriated for the permitting, bidding, subconsultant, engineering, and testing associated with the West Street Pilot Study located at 1296 West Street, Attleboro, Massachusetts, collectively the project, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow $500,000 under Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws and/or Section 7.7 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
Second.
Thank you. We just had the public hearing last night. Does anybody have any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I'd like to call for an adjournment at 6:23. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Counselor LaVoy?
Thank you. I'd like to call to order Public Safety Committee at 6:23. From the docket of August 20, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve expending of such funds and any future grant amendments by the Attleboro Fire Department regarding the receipt of the fiscal year 2024 Student Awareness of Fire Education Safe Grant, and the fiscal year 2024 Senior Safe Grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of $9,800.
Second.
Thank you. Pretty straightforward, and obviously, the safe program's fantastic, and any grant money is always appreciated. Any questions, comments, concerns? All righty, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's all we have, and I would call for an adjournment at 6:24.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Thank you, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Sawyer.
Call the Zoning and Land Use Committee to order at 6:24. Members of this committee are myself, Laura Dolan, and Nick LaVoy, and tonight we have three pieces of business. From the docket of June 18, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the following to lay out Bulcom Lane as a public way, length of 641.56 feet from station 0+00 to station 6+41.56, and except said way and any related drainage, water, or sewer facilities or easements, all as shown on a plan and profile entitled, Street Acceptance Plans for Veridian Meadows' Phase 1 Open Space Residential Development, dated March 2024, prepared by Kurt A. Nunes, PLS, and Thomas M. Cunningham, RPE of Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, Inc., which plan and profile have been deemed satisfactory to the superintendent of Public Works. Enclosed, please find the necessary documents.
Second.
Thank you. We did just hear the public hearing a couple nights ago, and this is just to the street acceptance for this development, first phase. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And from the docket of June 18, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the following to lay out Bulcom Lane as a public way, the other side of Bulcom Way, the length of 537.84 feet from station 10+88.40, station 6+41.56 in Phase 1 plans, to station 16+26.24, and except said way and any related drainage, water, or sewer facilities or easements, all as shown on a plan and profile entitled, Street Acceptance Plans for Veridian Meadows' Phase 2 Conventional Subdivision, dated March 2024, prepared by Kurt A. Nunes, PLS, and Thomas M. Cunningham, RPE of Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, Inc., which plan and profile have been deemed satisfactory to the superintendent of Public Works. Enclosed, please find necessary documents.
Second.
Thank you. This is just, again, the other side of Bulcom Lane. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And from the docket of June 18, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the following to lay out Dumont Way as a public way, length of 453.63 feet from station 0+00 to station 4+53.63, and except said way and any related drainage, water, and sewer facilities or easements, all as shown on a plan and profile entitled, Street Acceptance Plans for Veridian Meadows, sorry, Veridian Meadows' Phase 1 Open Space Residential Development, dated March 2024, prepared by Kurt A. Nunes, PLS, and Thomas M. Cunningham, RPE of Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, Inc., which plan and profile have been deemed satisfactory to the superintendent of Public Works. Enclosed, please find the necessary documents.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, again, this is another part of this development, that's just having the street acceptance for this. Any comments or questions? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That's three to zero, and that's all the business I have for the Zoning and Land Use Committee, I move to adjourn.
Second.
At six twenty-eight. I've got a second, thank you, and that's all the business I have, and.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I'd like to call the, this meeting of the Municipal Council back to order at six twenty-nine PM, and we will jump right into committee reports, beginning with Council Reynolds.
Thank you. From the docket of August twentieth, twenty-four, I approve, I move to approve a forty-eight-month lease agreement with Conoco Minolta for eight copiers to be, no wait a minute, right? To be deployed throughout the Atterboro School District.
Second. Thank you, motions in order, any comments? Sarah, any comments?
No, I have none, I'm sorry.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Council of FOA.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to approve the expenditure of these funds and approve any future grant amendments regarding the award of eight thousand dollars through Mass Development's TDI Local Fund Program to support the city's winter night festival, there are no matching funds required.
Second. Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No, I have none.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to approve the expenditure of these funds and approve any future grant amendments regarding the award of five thousand dollars through Mass Development's TDI Local Fund Program to organize and execute a new winter holiday event, Holiday Stroll, in our downtown.
Second. Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
I have none.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Council of FOA.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to authorize the Atterboro School Department to pay previous year school bills that totaled six hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second. Thank you, motion passes. I'm sorry, yikes. All right, so motions in order, any comments?
No, I have none.
Thank you, additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Now the motion passes.
From the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to transfer eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Education Bristol AG High School Department Assessment.
Second. Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
I have, whoa. It is debt assessment, just note.
Debt, what'd I say, department?
Yeah, it's debt assessment, sorry.
It was also written in the record, just, so thank you for that, yep. Seconded by Vice President Dolan, do we have any comments? Council?
No, I have none.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council of FOA.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That is all the business that the Finance Committee has this evening, but I would like to call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate.
Thank you, and Council Reynolds, thank you for covering for finance this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will stick with you, so you can go into your committee.
From the docket of August, reporting for the City Property and Claims Committee, from the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to accept the generous donation to the city of eight publicly accessible automated external defibrillators and eight weatherproof heated and insulated cabinets from Sister at Heart, and grant the mayor authorization to sign the associated partnership agreement that the city agrees to arrange for payment of these electrical permits and installation costs of approximately ten thousand dollars.
Second. Thank you, motions in order, is there any comments?
I have none.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
That is all the business that the City Property and Claims Committee has this evening, but I would like to call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Vice President Dolan?
Thank you, reporting for Public Works Committee, from the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to approve expending such funds and any future grant amendments regarding the receipt of a grant through Mass DEP in the amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars for cybersecurity upgrades of the Water Department SCADA system.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
I have none.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Council of FOA.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to approve the agreement between the City of Atterboro and the Massachusetts Water Wastewater Agency Response Network, WORN.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
None.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council of Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, from the docket of June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to approve the following loan order for the pilot study of PFAS and manganese removal.
Second.
Thank you.
I just feel comfortable reading the amount.
You can, it's your committee, you can do whatever you need to do.
Okay, I move to approve the following loan order for the pilot study in PFAS and manganese removal, ordered that five hundred thousand dollars is appropriated for this.
I would just read that sentence, up until West Street.
Is appropriated for the permitting bidding subconsultant engineering and testing associated with the West Street Pilot Study Program.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
None.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Council of FOA.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That's all the business for the Public Works Committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Council Lavoy.
Thank you, President Delicio, from the docket, oh, sorry, reporting to the Public Safety Committee, from the docket of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I move to approve expanding of such funds and any future grant amendments by the Atterboro Fire Department regarding the receipt of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four Student Awareness of Fire Education Safe Grant in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, Senior Safe Grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
Pretty straightforward, but just touch on it real quick in committee.
Very good, additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Ms. FOA?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That is all the business for the Public Safety Committee this evening, and I'll call[1415.58]